And I'm going to start off with the public comments. We have Maria Gonzalez who submitted a slip. If you can come up to the microphone.
Are we not doing a pledge of allegiance?
Let's start off with a pledge of allegiance, please. Put your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Maria Gonzalez.
So, I guess it was too low. I just hit myself. Anyway, thank you. This is my first time here, so I'm learning, and I appreciate the time that you guys have for us. And first of all, I just want to say that as a parent of San Ana Unified School District and as an alumni of, you know, San Ana Unified as well, I'm here to represent public education for all, not only a few students, for everybody. So, we're wearing this red and just to promote and to tell the parents that we are all included. You know, education is for everybody. It's public and nobody needs to charge, nobody needs to do things that we're not supposed to. And you as, you know, the representatives of the citizens of San Ana, I truly believe that if you're wearing yellow scarves, I think you guys can wear a red scarf because that's our democracy. If you do one thing for one group, you do another thing for the other group. So, that's equality. So, parents of San Ana Unified and we, actually, we don't have an organization, by the way. Nobody paid us, you know, to make this one. We made them ourselves, and we want you to have one and to wear it, just like you guys did last Saturday at Main Place. We want you to wear them, to show that you also support, you know, the education, the public, the real public education for everybody. So, my friend, Elizabeth de la Torres, she's going to give you one, and hopefully you guys can wear it as well. And this is only one point. My second point is, as a parent of San Ana Unified School District kid, my son goes to Roosevelt Elementary. Roosevelt Elementary is not my home school because my son has special needs. So, I usually travel about 25 minutes from the ward that I belong to all the way to Roosevelt Elementary. I see that within your agenda, Roosevelt Community Center, we're still, you know, expecting the date of the grand opening, you know, for the center. And one of the worries that we have is what is the city of San Ana doing and what is the San Ana Unified doing to protect our children, the community? It's very dense, you know? This is, it's a community where actually there's, I mean, there's everything. There's violence, there's drugs, there's gangs, there's everything. I mean, we're going to be using this space for the children, and are we having, you know, this kind of protection? Are we having security, like 24/7? What is going to happen with this community center? That's one of the worries that I have. Like I said before, that's not the, you know, the part of the city that I live in, but I worry about the kids and because of my son is there.
Thank you for your comment.
My second. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for the comment. Thank you for the gift. I understand that the, some of the electors over here also wear the yellow scarves, the red scarves, so, you know, I get it. Me personally, I support all of them. My daughter goes to public school. I also believe in education for everyone across the board, for all our constituents. So, I'm going to go ahead and continue. For the record, we have Councilmember Benavides present. We are waiting on Councilmember Tinajero. And if President Valerie Mesquita could, for the record, state who's here.
Good evening. I'm President Valerie Mesquita. I'm the president of the board, along with Mr. Palacio, who is a member. Dr. Rigo Rodriguez may join us, or he may not, he may be still out of town. And Dr. Phillips is here, our superintendent, with our cabinet members as well.
Thank you, Ms. Mesquita. I don't know, Madam President, or who would you like? I want to give you respect. Thank you. We're going to go ahead with the approval of the minutes, which is item number one.
Sure. So, I'll make a motion for improvement, and just if I may, just quick comment. One is, I want to thank a member of the public who came and spoke, and to echo Mr. Viegas' comments, thank you for the gift and for the work that the community and the parents have provided for us. I think there's a lot that we can take pride in, in our public schools and San Ana Unified School District, and so, appreciate the work of the parents and their support and the work of the board and the staff as well. We, with that, we don't normally have food in these meetings, so thank you for being here because Councilmember Tinajero wanted to be a good host. So, we have a full-on spread. As Councilman Viegas mentioned, we usually have little bags of chips or pretzels, if we're lucky. So, with that, just want to again make that motion and say thank you.
Mr. Benavides, is your motion for the May 22nd minutes or the October 30th minutes?
I'll make a motion for both, both sets of minutes, the 22nd of May and the 30th of October.
I'll second it. Or if I can get a second from.
I'll second.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, that's going to move on to item number three, which is the update on the partnership initiatives. 3.1 Roosevelt Community Center, Walker Field. If we can have an update from staff.
Absolutely. Well, thank you again for your hospitality and having me here. Joining with the, thank you, with the council. For item number one, there's two projects, but we're going to focus on Roosevelt, and then we'll segue into the Willard. So, Roosevelt, the project itself is 92% complete. The city council has already approved a $400,000 augmentation, which will, which should be the last augmentation for the project in order to enhance the landscape and do some miscellaneous project improvements. And then the district also is looking to have a ribbon cutting sometime on or about April of this year. So, I think we still need to coordinate some dates between both of our organizations, but I think that that's something that will be, have a great turnout, and I think a lot of people are very excited for it. I've had the pleasure of being able to walk through this space, and it's quite beautiful. And I have to say, your staff has done a terrific job helping guide us through the development of the project. Mr. Ohno, actually, has been intimately involved, as is others, and so they've done an excellent job. And I think when you see the insight, I think that you'll agree. So, my understanding was, it says the Roosevelt Community Center and Walker Field Project. Are we talking about, so I also did implementate, or some, an update for the Willard Project, but I wasn't sure if it was Willard or the Walker Field. So, we see the Walker Field as the $400,000 augmentation component. So, maybe I misunderstood.
If I may.
Go ahead.
Yes. The, it was meant to be the Roosevelt Community Center and Walker Field Project, and there was a typo. Instead of Walker, we said Willard. There really wasn't the request from the city on the Willard update. So, it's just the Walker. It's just one project, the Roosevelt Community Center and Walker Field Project. The city also put together that handout from the city's perspective, the actions the city has taken, including this, at the January 16th meeting, the city council added $400,000 to cover the landscape and the field and track that was needed for the project.
Thank you. Any questions from the Councilmember Benavides?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Question as to timeline. I know we're 90-plus percent complete, looking forward definitely to opening it up and making it available to our community. Do we have a timeline as to when we anticipate the project being 100% complete and ready and available?
So, we believe it will be 100% complete by March, latter part of March, and that's why we're looking for the ribbon cutting, to be able to enjoy the whole, the complete project in April. And then also, because our school year ends in May, for us, the month of May is going to be quite busy, so that's why we were proposing April.
Okay. Excellent. And any, so one is a positive thing, city and district, one of many, I think, examples of us fully working together and having both, you know, investment and commitment. The city also wanting to make sure that we are able to increase our financial commitment to be able to complete what was necessary with regard to the landscape, you know, at the last council meeting. Anything that we can speak to, the question with regard to security, most of our, our community centers, we have ensured that we have our police patrols and such, this being both a community center, it's public, a city, and then also being on a school site. Have we put some thought into and any response with regard to that security question?
Indeed. Just like at the Garfield Community Center joint use, the city, city council has already approved the resources for the same camera system that the police department oversees, that you recently approved for Six Parks, Seventh with Roosevelt, Walker. So, we'll have the system that, that you see in the downtown area that has direct feed to the police department.
I have a question. Are you done?
Yes. Valerie Mesquita, President.
David, were you done? Sorry.
Yeah, just had a question as to any presence, regular patrols, visits by either Santa Ana Police, school police, how we maybe operate. I don't know if it's on regular, I know at Garfield, I've seen PDs come by periodically. I don't know if there's anything programmed that way, or if it's on an as new basis based on staff contacting.
We have patrols going through, around our schools at night after hours, and so this would be a continuation of that. But if there's programming, excuse me, if there's programming that's happening, typically through Civic Center, we have the appropriate DSO or security, you know, oversight at that site. So, if it's open, absolutely someone will be there to do, depending on who's, who's programming that space, and then we have our regular patrols.
Good. Excellent. Thank you.
That was part of what my question was going to be. Is there a relationship or a mechanism in place where we're communicating with Santa Ana School Police on a regular basis regarding this?
Yes. We do, on a regular basis for like Garfield, for example, or in fact, there's a good example, a very successful example on Willard, where the camera system is the school districts, and there was a recent, pretty serious vandalism that occurred with regards to graffiti, and the images were very helpful for PD to make an arrest.
So, if an incident occurs, your, the Santa Ana Police Department will be in direct contact with Santa Ana School Police?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, that's my question.
Yes.
That's a big question for me.
Mr. Viegas, a quick question. Do you have any park rangers now, or what's the?
The, the park rangers, we do have park rangers. There is Corporal Luis Barragan, and Park Ranger David Madrid are currently on staff, and they're supported with additional regular police officers for the time being, as the police department continues its effort in staffing up that program.
Yeah, recruitment is open and ongoing, so for the time being, but yeah, we recognize that we need a lot more of park rangers. Any other questions from the council members or the board members? Going to continue to item number 3.2, use of the stadium?
This item is, there's a handout. This was a follow-up to the last joint policy meeting in October. If you look at your minutes, this was asked. I had the pleasure of meeting with Dr. Heatley. Did I pronounce that right? And we discussed that, and then also it was brought up by Councilmember Tinajero at the last Youth Education and Community Services Council Committee at the January 22nd meeting. So, here you have an update on the school district's use for the stadium, which is, as you can see, the current football participants are at San Ana High School, San Ana College, and Mater, Mater Dei High School. The rental cost per game is $1,873.52. The school renting the stadium is allowed to sell spirit items, shirts, caps, sweaters, noise makers, et cetera. The school renting the stadium can also sell food, provided they obtain a permit from the OC Health Department. All schools and colleges and college are treated and charged the same, no difference. Godenas High School has not requested the use of the stadium for home games in over five years. This past November is a follow-up to the October joint policy meeting. City staff contacted Santa Ana High School and reminded them that they could take advantage of the selling of food, just like Mater Dei does, but Santa Ana High School informed us that they would rather not at this time sell food. So, that's, that concludes the status report on the stadium.
Mr. Viegas, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
The reason, the only school that uses the Santa Ana Stadium is Santa Ana High School, simply because of the location. All other high schools are using the Century, Segestrum, or Valley. Okay? So, that's why Godenas has not requested it, even though we do, we do have a field at Centennial. Problem is, it's unusable because it's very, the condition of the field is not in best shape because of overuse by soccer, adult soccer, and so, you know, that's, you know, so that's what we'll address down the road. I did check with our school sites and church principals, and no one has ever been, they're not aware of ever been having the opportunity to sell food. So, they've always been told that the district, the city has a contract with the concessionaire who may sell, but we do not have access to either the concessions, you know, your stands and all, nor have they sold food.
City staff has no problem in communicating to all the Santa Ana High Schools to make sure that everyone is aware of the opportunity, if they rent the stadium, to sell food or spirit, spirit items.
Yes, spirit items, yes. I recognize, but I don't think we were.
We'll follow up and make sure that everyone knows.
Councilmember Benavides?
Thank you, Chairman Viegas. Mr. Godenas, if you could please work with our staff to provide a simple memo to the superintendent that she, that could, that she could then make available to her school principals that make use of the stadium, so that it's clear we're all on the same page and clarify that item, please. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Mesquita.
Thank you, Councilwoman Benavides. We appreciate the support from the council regarding this matter. And again, I just want to make, Mr. Palacio covered it, but in November, when you had the meeting, football season was already over, so there was really no need at this point for the stadium. But Mater Dei has had, I want to just be clear on the record, Mater Dei has had a long history of using the stadium and selling food and keeping that money, from what I'm being told by Mater Dei. And Santa Ana Unified, who is a partner with you, has, we're charged and we're not allowed to sell food. So, I'm hoping that we can fix that and make some changes because this, this is our community, these are our constituents, these are our children, and so we should not be using the vendors that the city wants us to use. If the parent booster gets that license, or the Orange County Health Department gets a permit from the Health Department, or a vendor that they're going to make money off from, I think that's what we need to look at, because if we're using a city vendor, we're not benefiting from it as a, as a high school, as a school. So, if we're able to select our own vendors, and I'm sure Mr. Councilmember Tinajero may talk about this more in detail, but if we can also take a look at that, because we don't want you to give us a list of what vendors we can use. Again, we're partners in this, in the city together, so if we can take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tinajero?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the nice things is, when I was teaching at Fullerton Union High School, we hosted a speech and debate program, or a speech and debate tournament that was a national invitational every year. And so, one of the things that they said we had to do was to get something from the Orange County Department of Health, so that our parents could then be selling, because in the concession stands. Our parents had to go through a online educational system where they received a certificate at the end, and that qualified them to then go ahead and cook the food and so forth. It was basically about safety precautions. So, as Board Member Mesquita states, there is a way for our booster clubs to be certified and then be able to sell food. And so, I completely agree, and Mr. City Manager, it's imperative that if we have worked in a, if we have used a policy that is not, does not show, you know, equity with our partners here in the Santa Ana Unified School District, that we do that as well. I just want to double check. So, Mr. Moet, so, including Mater Dei, they have, everyone is charged $1,873.52 per week.
Correct.
Correct? The other item that I wanted to discuss was, my understanding is, when I had a nephew who, or a second cousin, who played football for Servite, and so, I was always amazed at how, when you go to these games, they have tailgate parties. And they have tailgate parties, and they have alcoholic beverages at these tailgate parties. And so, I asked the Servite folks, I said, "What happens when you guys play at Eddie West Field or at the Santa Ana Stadium?" And they said, "Well, now, when it's Servite, they play at Anaheim at the Angel Stadium, but when they, when they would, when Mater Dei plays here, that the county allows for them to have their tailgates here in our, in the parking right across the way." So, I want to know if that's accurate.
I don't know off the top of my head, and Vique, are you here? Do you know if Mater Dei has tailgate, tailgate gate activities in the county parking lot? I think that's the question.
I am aware that they do some tailgating there. I don't know to what extent they're approved, to what materials they're allowed to have there.
The jurisdiction on that obviously would be the county, then, or?
That is correct.
Correct. Okay. So, we would have to clear that up.
We can follow up and find out more.
Well, there actually, there is tailgating, in fact, they have onings and, and.
It's a tailgate, it's a party.
If there's tailgating, you know, it's still a matter of who's charged, and that we can bring it to their attention, and they might be doing it illegally, they might be doing it legally, I don't.
And that's all I'm asking is, yeah, just for information on that occurring. The reason is, I get a little, it frustrates me a little bit sometimes, because sometimes I feel that when it comes to our community, it's an automatic no. But when it's to other, other outside entities, it's, well, we'll work with you. And so, I just want there to, to be, again, treat our community like the taxpaying citizens that they are, and, and so that if our parents decide to have a tailgate, or they inquire about maybe having some tailgate festivities over on that county property here, that's right here, adjacent to our city property, that we, we have the option. I'm not saying that we're going to do it, but we have the option. So, it's probably good to check with our supervisor, who we're working very closely on with other projects as well.
Mr. Chair, thank you for bringing that up. As the board president, as representing the board, and I think all of us here, we really appreciate that, because there's a long history of, and people will, may disagree, but there's a long history of being the stepchild. And because we have a great relationship with the council, city manager, and the board, together, I think we can take care of this and no longer be the stepchild, but be a partner, because this is our community. So, I really appreciate your comments. Thank you.
May I ask one more question?
Sure. Councilmember Tinajero? No, I have a quick comment, but go ahead.
Okay. So, we've talked about partnerships. So, when we talk about partnerships, we have to ask ourselves, what does that mean? What's the definition of a partnership? It looks like we're charging, I know that there's a partnership between the college and the district, which I'm a little envious of, okay? And I've made that public as well. When we talk about partnership, Mr. City Manager, I look at a private institution who's paying $1,873.52. Again, I have to go back to my days when I was at another school district. We ran a summer program, and the summer program, the cost for our summer program for one of my students was $800 per student. But if you were from outside the district, we added a $200 surcharge, because we're still paying for custodial lights and so forth, so they had to pay a little more. It was a little different for our students, they had to pay a little more. So, I'm looking at a private entity, right? Private entity, and that's paying $1,873.52. If we are becoming partners, I think the discussion has to come to, what does that mean? In other words, should Santa Ana High School be paying the full $1,873 to use that facility if we are partnering? Because at that point, then, we're not a partner. We're, we are more of a, you know, service provider. Does that make sense? So, my question to our staff at the Santa Ana Unified School District is, what is the cost for you when you use Segestrum, or Segestrum High School Stadium? What is the cost when you use the complex, sports complex at Valley High School for one football game?
With respect to the facilities, sir, it's zero. Those are, those are costs that are already being budgeted in terms of, we have those facilities. We have to then pay for staff, we have to pay for, you know, transportation and those types of things. But in terms of this facility versus that facility, we actually have to pay $1,800 plus every time we use the facility, not just for home games. We pay for practice game, practice time as well, by the hour. So, when we, when we schedule our own fields, we pay for our own custodial, we pay for our own maintenance and those types of things, but we don't have to, our schools don't pay to use our fields. That, that's for our kids and for our community to use.
Okay. So, Mr. Moet, what is the, the actual cost for staffing, lighting, that, that we have to pay for to cover costs? In other words, at what point do we, if we were to say, this is what it costs for us to not lose any money as a city, what would that number be?
So, the, every year when the budget gets approved by city council, the miscellaneous fee schedule is adopted, and that, that schedule has exactly the fees that you just mentioned. It articulates the hourly fee for staff and for the cost of rental facilities, depending on what they are, if it's a particular room at a center or the stadium. They all have different fees, and there's no problem with regards to getting policy direction on doing something different. Then we would have to alter those miscellaneous fees when they get adopted by the city council. But I can't, if you want a specific dollar amount for, say hypothetically, if the city were to use the stadium and not charge itself, of course, but what would be the actual cost for staffing? I can get that for you. I don't know off the top of my head, but I'll follow up and get that for you.
And we could do the same. We could get that staffing cost.
Yeah, because one of the things is, is the staffing cost is something that we can't lose money on. I mean, we have our workers that are out there servicing our light bill and so forth, but if, I think a partner is someone that says, "We're not going to make money off of you as an entity," because it takes money away from kids. So, what you say is, we are partners, there's going to be a little wear and tear. When that time comes, since we've been partners and we've reduced the fees to just pay for our cost, school district, can you help us, you know, since you're using this too? And I think that's what creates a partnership, and that's what creates this give and take when it comes to that. So, I would like for us to take a look at, and I know I'm just one council member, but there's others here who can maybe direct staff to come to us at the city council level with a new set of fees that cover cost for our true partners, which is our, our school district, our public school system here in the city of San Ana. All that's going to do is open up funds for our students to be able to get better uniforms, better helmets, you know, equipment that they need, and that only makes us a stronger city, a stronger community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Benavides?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with the concept of doing everything we can to have this, to be partners and, if we can, to reduce costs, reduce fees, as you, Councilman Tinajero pointed out, that there are some fees that we, it's part of operating and having the lights on and staffing and such. And what you described, if, and I don't know, I think one is just these simple fees. Then what you mentioned toward the tail end, there is, there obviously is going to be wear and tear, and at some point, there is going to be replacements and improvements to facilities. I don't know how excited the board or the school district will be about that side of things, and whether that's something I would need to, you know, draw up in agreement. And, and whether that's something I would need to, you know, draw up an agreement if that would work. Uh, and if everybody would still be on the same page then. The, the question that I, that I have as well is, there are also, there are certain facilities that the, that the city has and for, not to provide for our kids as well and families, our parks and, uh, stadium and, and, uh, soccer, uh, complex over at Centennial, Danyang and such. Uh, there are also facilities, uh, that the, uh, the district also is, is, is likely to have as well. And, and whether it be that, uh, school sites, uh, recently, the establishment of the, uh, uh, Valley Sports Complex. So I'm, I'm wondering if that, that reciprocal relationship would also be, uh, made available? If, if programs, uh, parks and recreation, for example, is wanting to have a, a tournament, uh, uh, flag football or some, some type of tournament, would we be also available, able to use the, 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 some of the, the facilities of the, the district, such as the, the sports complex at a zero cost or at a, at a, you know, staffing only cost?
Are you done?
Miss Mesqua.
I was waiting till you finished. So, uh, of course, we're going to want to sit down with you and, and be a true partner, as, as Councilman Tina Harrow has talked about. And I think that's something that we have not done historically. And so, um, we're going to look at all of those areas. And when you talk about using our schools, we currently run, the soccer leagues play at our schools and they pay a fee. And, uh, for example, if you look at Godenas, we pay, it's, Godenas High School pays to use the park, City Manager. We're going to also address that, I know it's coming up. So I mean, there's a lot of things and, and what we don't want to do is spend time going back and forth on, you know, "Well, if you pay this, I'll pay that." Um, I think what we really want to do is sit down and just come to an agreement and figure out the, the dollars. Um, and, and not wait six months to do it, because sometimes it takes a long time to get down to the nitty gritty. And I know our wonderful new city manager is going to make this happen sooner than later. So yes, we want to be a partner, um, but a fair partner. I mean, I know that's what you want as well, a fair partner. When we're paying to use Godenas Centennial Park, when we're paying, you know, to use the Eddie Westfield, and historically, everybody in the city knows Modern Day's used it and gets a lot of benefits. And San Antonio Unified never received those benefits. And, you know, whether it was true or not, it was always of who you're friends with, you know? My kid goes to Modern Day, my kid goes to San Ana, that's irrelevant to all of us that are here now. What's important is that, as Mr. Tina Harrow, and as you have said, we're here to serve our community. And we can do it together. And the only way to do it is to sit down and, um, work it all out. And look at the joint agreement that we have and rewrite it, um, with our staff and your staff at the table. So, of course, we're willing to open up our, our areas, but it has to be equal. It can't be, "We're paying, you know, 90% and you're paying 10%." Um, because as Mr. Councilman Tina Harrow has indicated, the money that we use and we have, um, we take it very seriously, this board does. It's for our kids, it's about the kids. So that's pretty much at the end of the day. So yes, we will partner with you.
Mr. Vegas, I mean, historically, I don't think we charge the city to use our facilities. I don't think we have. And, but we have brought a standard that we've been talking about, uh, and that is, in order to have a true partnership, we need to have shared maintenance, real maintenance. Okay? We need to have shared capital investment. We both need to put something into, into, into the, uh, investment terms of capital all day. Shared capital replacement, for example, if you look at, uh, when you're using, uh, synthetic fills, you got to put money in, because six, seven, eight years later, you have to replace it, right? And we're talking about shared revenue. And those are the, those are our principles that we've had, that we've had in discussion with, with the city. Because that's what is important, uh, because you basically, you use our facilities, we don't charge you. You, you use, you get revenue from it too. You charge us to use, the city charges us for us to use our own facilities. I mean, you know, you charge us to use the, the gym at Godenas, you charge us to use the Performing Arts Center, you charge us to use the softball fields, uh, you, uh, the, uh, and, and anything that exceeds, for example, we have, if we had a basketball game tonight, you charge us. Now, Russon Turner, you would charge us. And, and so, you know, it, it, it's, yet, you know, so we're trying to say, "Hey," like Mr. Benavides said and DeNaceto, "How do you balance this out?" So that it's a win for everyone. But, and so, I'm not aware of where we have charged to, to use our own facilities. In fact, we gave you a room to use at Godenas, uh, that hasn't been used for 10 years.
All right.
Miss Mesqua.
I, I was just going to say, we're going to be, Mr. Palacio, we're going to come together with the city.
Right.
City badge and the superintendent, and we're going to work this all out, all right? So, thank you, Mr. Tina Harrow, Councilman Tina, for bringing it up and for your guys' support, we appreciate it. Thank you.
My closing comment on that item is just that, you know, the last youth commission and education committee that we had the meeting last week, um, I said, I stated, and I believe in, that, uh, all the schools, everyone needs to be treated fairly, the same. Obviously, we want to help our schools, um, the district. So, yeah, I, I totally believe we should work something out and come to the table. If we can have staff on our side, staff on your side, just come to some kind of agreement. You know, it is, it does sound kind of weird to say, "Hey, they got to charge us for our own," you know, we had these discussions. And, uh, it does sound a little odd, but, um, you know, an agreement's an agreement, right? So, we will have to renegotiate that and, and see where we come at. But we do want to help our schools and, you know, we need to help each other, we're serving the same community. And, and I totally agree with that. And whatever agreements that we had before, I guess we just renegotiate them, right? Because that's why they're charging you now, correct?
Well, I, I, we were just, I was not aware that we had to charge to use our own facilities.
The next item will clarify this.
Well, I, I understand that, this is not correct.
I wanted to get, so.
This is not correct.
So, we're going to go to the next item and then we'll, we'll touch on that topic, okay? But, uh, I do believe in being fair and, and, uh, you know, we're going to move on. So, item number 3.3, we can have staff, uh, speak on this.
Thank you. Um, at the last youth, uh, education community services council meeting on January the 22nd, the committee asked us to put this on today's agenda. And, um, so, as you can see on the screen, and you also have a hard copy of the handout, um, the map shows in green the facilities that are joint use. And it includes the football field that has a track and the two ball diamonds. And it includes the two baseball diamonds, it includes the gym and the performing arts facility. Uh, Godenas High School receives first priority for reservation for those facilities. And Godenas High School or the San Antonio Unified School Districts are not charged for any of their direct use of the above facilities after hours. Um, we'd be happy to send reports of all the reservations that we know and show that there wasn't any charge. Now, what might be confusing is that, at times, Godenas High School does, uh, reserve and use fee, part of the fields in Danyang Soccer Complex, as you can see in the map, and Fields 5 and 6. And like we do with everyone, it's the lowest fee, but we do charge for that. And, and that is because the community also wants to use it. But we give priority to Godenas High School if they want to use Fields 5 and 6, which are not joint use facilities, and the Danyang Soccer Complex. But we'll follow up and make sure that there's a detailed report showing that indeed, the city does not charge for joint use facilities used by the school district at Godenas.
Dr. Phelps, you're kind of, what we've been, uh, we've been being charged?
So, the, um, we do have to set aside budgets every year for payment of, for the civic center fees for the, uh, for the complex. Um, and so recently, we just had a change in, in principle. And so that was, that was all coming to light, that, that was being charged, so we need.
For the complex, correct. But not for the joint use facilities?
So then we need, we, we'll need to sit down and reconcile, because we are hearing from the school that they are being charged for additional rooms on that site.
Yeah, for the Danyang Soccer Complex, they would.
For the theater, for the gym.
Yes.
Those areas.
So, we'll clarify that, Enrique, to, so you have clarified with me that indeed, we don't charge the school district for the use of the performing arts facility or the gym, for, when the school district uses it, correct?
That is correct.
So, we'll follow up and make sure that we provide the documentation to clarify. But, um, I was under the assumption that perhaps maybe would, the confusion was that we do charge for the park side, not the joint use side. Uh, Field 5 and 6, what we call Field 5 and 6, you can see in the map, in the Danyang Soccer Complex, because Godenas does regularly use, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
They do regularly use those, further PE classes for a variety of different things.
I, I look forward to that conversation.
Miss Mesqua.
So let me just clarify something, um, because we, uh, we've been doing some research on this, we knew we were going to have this meeting. Um, our PE teachers have to reserve for daily use and pay for it. Um, we're talking Godenas High School. Um, we've been billed $40,000 one year, um, we've been billed $20,000 another year. Um, a conservative estimate for our usage, ours as in San Antonio Unified at Godenas High School, is about $20,000. Um, so again, as, and I can, I don't want to bore you with the rest of the email, I'm City Manager, but I will gladly share it with you. Um, but again, as the council members had indicated, um, working together as a partnership, what we hear is, "I, I don't know, I didn't know, um, haven't seen the money." I could tell you, we, we could show you that we've been paying, and we've been paying a lot of money. And it would, I'm not here to place blame on anybody. And, um, again, we're going to move forward and we're going to work this out. Because when we're having to pay $20,000 a year for our high school to schedule PE, to have PE, it, it's a problem. And so, um, as the superintendent has indicated, we allocate money, um, for Godenas to, to pay you guys to use the, the Centennial Park area. Um, and Mr. Councilman Tina Harrow very clearly talked about partnerships. So, and not going back from the last 20 years, but from moving forward at this point. And that's why we've asked for a joint city council and school district meeting. So, everybody in the council is aware of what's happening, everybody on the board is aware. And then we can come to the table and talk about how much money, as a district, have we been historically paying? Um, so disturbing when somebody says, "We don't know," or, "That's not true," because we have been paying. Um, and so it's going somewhere. So, I'm sure you're going to figure out, City, Mr. City Manager, where it's going. So, thank you, Mr. Vegas.
Councilmember Benavides.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. So just a, a little bit of, of, uh, my understanding, kind of historic understanding here of this, uh, of this, the, the field and the, and the school, and the school site. Uh, a, a portion of, from what I, I understand, recollect, a portion of the school is built on, from what I understand, the academic buildings are, and are built on school property, property the school district owns, right? Then there are other, uh, parts of the school, uh, the fields, baseball fields, the theater, the gym, I believe, are, are, are built on, uh, property that the, that the city owns. Uh, right? And the way that, that it was, uh, uh, came together for Godenas High School at Centennial Park to be established was for there to be this, this, this coming together, it's very controversial, uh, at the time. And, 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 but, but this coming together, both that the board took a bold, uh, action and step, the city and the council took a bold action and step to be able to say, "No, we, we want that, what we've been talking about, partnership. We want to be able to see this happen. It's for the benefit of our community, our, our students will be able to have a, a, a state-of-the-art, uh, new, uh, school available to them. The, the, the same students, after 3 o'clock, the families essentially of, of the city would be able to have an improved, uh, park space, uh, with fields, a gym, theater, uh, that they'll be able to enjoy after school hours." Uh, so, the, the, the city represents the, the taxpaying, uh, families of, of, uh, Santana, the families, residents of Santana, the school district represents, uh, that those families well, particularly the children and, and their education, uh, and, and is responsible for ensuring, uh, their, you know, quality education and experience. Any fees that either of us receive, it's, it's basically, it's a taxpayers', for anything that we pay, it's a taxpayers' monies that we pay, and anything that we receive is taxpayers' monies that, that, that we receive, uh, as well, and that we're stewards of those, of those resources. Uh, so, from, from what I have understood, uh, that, that the relationship is that the, it's the public, the families, uh, have the, the right to be able to use their field, their theater, their gym, after 3 o'clock hours or 5 o'clock. I think, I'm not sure exactly how, uh, far, how late those hours are used, but are, are, are extended. But essentially, after hours, weekends, it's, it's the public's, uh, facilities. And then, again, during school hours, it's, it's the, the school district's facilities for, for our students. Uh, so the times that they're not able to be aware, after, after school hours, the times that those fields, that that theater, that the gym are not being able to be used by the families of the community, uh, it's essentially, there, there, it's not accessible to them. So that, that, what I meant, what I'm, the way I'm understanding, those fees are basically, in lieu of the families not being able to make use of their, of, of, of the fields or the spaces that are, that are, do then. So it's essentially those tax dollars coming back in for, to be able to be used for parks in other, in other ways. Uh, to freeze, to be able to use, basically, to approve parks or whatever needs that the community might have. So, so for, what, what I am struggling a little bit with is that, if it's after hours, technically, it's a park. If it's during school hours, then technically, it's, it's, it's part of the school, right? So that this, this sense that the school district is paying to, and it sounds like, uh, uh, it is confusing. It's, are we, are they paying, are they not, are we charging them, are they not? Uh, I think we do have to clarify that. However, it would, I think it would be reasonable if there is a fee potentially after school hours, because it is, at that point, a school, a, a, a park, a park space, right? Park resources. Uh, the, the notion that the district is paying to, for their own, to be able to use their own facilities, I, I, I understand where that's, that's, seems to be, doesn't make sense. But based on the joint use agreement and the way that this came together, essentially, it's a park after those hours. Is the way, the way I've, I've understood it. Otherwise, if it's a school district space the whole time, then essentially, what, the way it was presented to the public and the way it was kind of sold to the public, then it sounds like it was not, uh, being totally truthful in that. The way it was presented is, school district space during the, during the school day hours, and then after hours, it becomes part of the park. If we're saying that it's always a school and the school should never be able to, to, should never have to, you know, have a fee or anything of that sort, then, then it seems like what, what we presented to the public was not, was not accurate. So I, I may be confused, but that's some, some of the questions.
Councilmember DeNaceto.
Okay.
I think, uh, if you look at the picture to the right, there's homes there, that's where I grew up. So, I grew up, and I'll never forget, when they opened up the Popeye's Chicken, right on the corner of Fairview and Ender, man. I was the happiest kid around. And they opened up Centennial right around the same time. So I was excited to go to Centennial Park. I remember the, the city had little, uh, little, little games out there where we played like little pool on like little cardboard. It was, it was interesting. But, um, if you look at the green space that's there, it was all dirt. From the moment that the park was open, it was dirt. It was little, a little bicycle, like, they created like a little bicycle ramp and so forth. That never changed, that, that was there since I was a little kid, um, all the way through, uh, my adulthood, um, even after I had moved out of the neighborhood. Um, and the uniqueness is, is that I was on that side of the table on the school board when this was all happening. And the one thing that I, I just want to let people know, I, I want to pause for a second, and let's backtrack a little, or, let's step forward. A few years ago, there was a neighborhood group, and it was a very small group, that came in and were very upset that we were going to put on, we were going to put a baseball fence up. Now, mind you, a baseball fence that, that still had the foul lines wide open, so communities could go in and play baseball. So there wasn't a fence blocking the fields. But it was a baseball fence. Why do you need a baseball fence? Because every varsity team has a baseball fence. And because it's a safety issue. There's cars that are driving down that little ring road, you don't want them to get hit, and then there's a liability for the school district. I'm bringing this up because it was a fight to do something that was so simple. Even the athletic director and baseball players had to come, and it was embarrassing that they had to come to our city council to convince us that, "No, in fact, we need this baseball fence." Well, our council, by that time, uh, we were all sitting, uh, councilmember Benavides, myself and a few others, were sitting there. And it was a, it was a no-brainer. We made, we made the decision to put up a baseball fence. Their argument was, "You're going to fence off the whole place," that wasn't the case. But what was interesting about it is, I made the argument, I said, "You know what? The individuals who are coming in and are so adamant that we don't put up this baseball fence, don't even go to the park. I can put money down that they don't even go to the park." I can put money down that they don't even go to the park." And it was just a way to make, hey, the marquee, they made a big issue about the marquee. They made a big issue about the little signage of the school, that, oh, it's going to take up space. Are you kidding me? It's taking up a little area that nobody walks through, that nobody uses. It's just a little area as you walk into the park. Well, they put up the fence, they took it down, which is a cost to the district. The next year, they put up the fence, and this time, they didn't take it down. And I told them, I said, "You know what? Don't take it down. Let's see how long it takes before people realize that we haven't taken the fence down." It's been eight years, since one person has said, "Hey, I thought you guys were supposed to put the fence down." The fact is, they're not going to monitor that, because the reality is, we need that fence. Why am I bringing this up? I'm bringing this up because back then, when I was on that side, the council members on this side, which was a very different council back then, were doing everything they possibly could to basically torpedo this project. And they were making it almost impossible for us to build. We lost millions of dollars, because members on this side of the council leaked information that we were looking to build Heroes Elementary. So then what they did is, they bought, they told their friends, "Buy that property, the school district wants it." So they bought the property, and guess what? They raised it by three million dollars. So we, we, our kids lost out, because someone in this council, that, by the way, it's not anyone in here, but it's someone that's still here, utilized their, their information to benefit their friends, which in turn benefited them politically. So I'm just making it very, a very honest, chron, I'm trying, I'm trying to bring it in chronologically. So what I'm saying is, is that what we have right now at Godinez was, was, it was, it was brought to light under a system that was never to benefit the Santa Ana Unified School District, okay? So what I'm saying is, the field space, absolutely, I agree with councilmember Benavides. If it's after hours, and the school district is not using it, that becomes city time, absolutely. What we have to look at is, what about that, that play that the kids have been working on? And the parents that are going to come watch our students perform in that little auditorium? When we have to pay ten, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars, it takes away from the sets that we could use, the costumes that we could use. I've told this story before, I'm going to say it really fast. My wife came to me about five years ago, my brother was living at Santa Margarita, and she says, "Hey, your sister-in-law wants our daughter to go with your niece," they were little girls, "to go get trained on how to be cheerleaders with Tesoro High School." And I said, "Okay." She says, "It's a hundred and fifty dollars each." And I said, "What? Oh, absolutely not, we're not sending them there." She says, "Oh, no, 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 your sister-in-law's going to pay for, for your daughter, for Grace." I said, "Oh, well then, shoot, let her go." You know? I said, "Shoot, that's all right." So I went out there, they went out to their little, they trained them, and on Friday night, they got to go cheer with the real cheerleaders from Tesoro High School. It was a cool event. I sat there and I went, "Huh, I got to tell the kids at Fullerton High School that they could do this." So I came back, I was teaching government, I said, "Hey, I got something for you. You could have this fundraiser where you teach girls how to cheer, and then you bring them on Fridays, they cheer with you, and you make some money." And they said, "Oh, Mr. T, we already do that." I said, "Oh, really?" By the way, Tesoro had a hundred girls, and they had a waiting list. I said, "You guys do that?" She says, "I said, "How many girls did you have?" They said, "A hundred." I said, "Nice! How much did you charge?" She said, "Thirty dollars." So I said, "Well, well, well, timeout. Tesoro just made fifteen thousand dollars on that fundraiser, and you made three thousand. What did you use that money for?" She said, "Oh, some girls couldn't afford the uniforms, some girls couldn't even afford their boxes." I said, "Let me tell you what Tesoro did. Five thousand went to go pay for them to go to a gym and learn how to tumble. The other five went to a professional choreographer to teach them how to do a professional-style cheer routine, and the other five thousand paid for all their entry fees. Do you see where I'm coming from? So when we take money from our schools, we take money from our kids. And so what ends up happening is, this group over here works hard, but they fail sometimes to realize the privilege that they have, and they look down upon this other group, because they must not work as hard as we do. And that is something that I think we have to take a look at, is how are we protecting our institutions as a group? So I agree with councilmember Benavides, when it comes to field space. I think when it comes to the infrastructure, the brick and mortar, if there is a, if something from our school, from our schools that is using that, and it's our students that are using that, as you stated, it's the same taxpayer. Let's benefit that taxpayer, so we don't take the money. Because right now, Mr. Moet is saying that we don't charge. You're saying that we do charge, okay? I don't know, because I don't have, I don't have data. But if you have a check that has been written out to the city of Santa Ana, that's all you have to show, to prove that you are paying something. And if you are paying something, then the next question comes in is, where did that money go? Was there a direct benefit to our kids from the city? Because here's the thing, if the money was not paid, and, and the school, Godinez High School, kept it, they could show you exactly where that money went to that student. We, on the other hand, at this moment, if we did get paid, we don't know where that money went. Was there a direct benefit to our community? And so that's where we have to take a look at where we're at. And I agree with council, councilmember Villegas, Mr. Councilmember Villegas, one of the things that really warmed my heart is when he said, "We got to look at fairness. We have to take a look at fairness. And if we have to redo this, then we have to redo this to benefit."
Mr. Tinojero, here, when you went down the historical side, because I'm a little older, I guess, it was a council who, who we could not use, the offer we put, and I was on the, on the school board, that we put on the city, "We will do the park, finish the park that you haven't been able to do, like you talked about." What the council did is, they leveraged it, and we were forced to pay the Heritage Museum a ton of money, you know, to accommodate their friends, the council, the friends of the council. That property's ours. That acres, all that acres in the back is ours. But the city tied us, because, no, you, you can't use that, because we won't let you use this, we won't let you finish the park. So part of the thing, Mr. Benavides, is, and Mr. Villegas, is understanding the history. This is the council that you said that is different today, that, that places in a situation, you will only be able to use these facilities under these conditions. In fact, we lent the city a room that for ten years has never been used. We've asked for it back, they won't let us. And in fact, it had mold. In fact, they had the musical instruments, and somehow, they disappeared, that the city had. I don't know what happened to it, but is that fair?
Was that the Santa Ana Winds?
Yes.
So we will take a note, the good doctor here has been patient. Go ahead, Dr. Phillips, thank you.
Just very quickly, thank you for the comments, because you kind of touched on what I was going to say. You know, there is some notion of schools being in session and then after hours. The one thing in Santa Ana that we have continued to kind of strive for is having our schools be open, so that kids have somewhere productive to go, so that they stay after school for after-school programs, so that they have outlets and interventions. So what used to be, and probably when, when this whole project was put together, of a three-thirty or a four o'clock end to school, is now a six-thirty, seven o'clock end to school perhaps, and then you have your theater, and you have other projects and opportunities for kids. So I just wanted to make sure that the, the audience understands that our schools, yes, the instruction, formal instruction may end at, when the bell rings, but we have a lot of different programming that's happening up until seven, eight, nine o'clock at night at our high schools.
Mr. Moet, did you want to add something? I know earlier you were...
Simply, I was simply going to say that we'll work with city manager Godinez to make sure that we provide reports, so that it could be shared at the appropriate time with the school district on these matters.
Mr. City Manager, did you, you're good? Okay, I thought you were going to say...
The last comment I have on this item is, and this will be part of the report, I hope, it says that, "City of Santa Ana charges for all reservations to non-SAUSD runners for the use of Godinez High School fields or performance amphitheater. All collected fees are turned over to SAUSD." And I checked prior to starting, because we just received this information today, as we walked, we got here, so it'd be nice to get it ahead of time, but we do not receive any money, any fees, from the city to Santa Ana Unified, Mr. City Manager. Our CBO is sitting right over there, so at any time you'd like to meet with him, he can verify this. We do not receive any money. So, again, this is for clarification purposes, and, and we don't need to have that long discussion here, I know.
No, we'll make...
But we need to...
Add it to the report.
Add it to the report, and exactly how much money has been turned over to Santa Ana Unified, and when, so that our CBO, Dr. Heatley over there, can meet with city staff and verify that this is actually, because we don't have any record of any fees.
Councilmember Benavides.
Yeah, Madam President, thank you for pointing that, highlighting that point. And again, you know, I'm, I'm a fan of, I'm a product of public education, I wasn't lucky enough to attend schools here in Santa Ana Unified. My, my kids do though, and I'm a fan, the district.
His kid just won the Congress term.
That's true, that's true, that's right. But I, I'm a bit, you know, perplexed, and at the same time, I, the fairness, the parity, making sure that we are true partners, all of that, I also believe in that. I'm councilman Tinojero, had the privilege of being on that side of the table, and so he kind of has benefit of being on both. I've only been on this side of the table, and so my lens is looking at the, the, the city and the taxpayer on this side, and, and all of that. But, but I do want us to, you know, make sure that we are extending, you know, arms across the table and overall again, because it is the, the city of Santa Ana as a whole, whether it be schools, or parks, or streets, whatever the case might be, it's, we want to make sure to protect and support and have our city as a whole thrive. I do have a question about that, that point, though, with regard to collecting fees, and specifically it being turned over to SAUSD, because again, what, and I might, I might be completely misunderstanding this agreement, that Godinez High School at Centennial Park. But from what I, what I, what I'm understanding is that after, that the part of the agreement is that after hours, it is city facilities that was built on the park, on the, on the, on the park side. And so with that being the case, wouldn't it be, if it's a city, if we were to rent Centennial, I mean, yeah, Centennial Park, or we're to rent Southwest Senior Center, or the Santana Senior Center, or, or, you know, New Hope Library, or that Salgau Center, anyway, any fees recouped there would go back to, to parks and facilities, is what I, so with this, if it's being turned over to the district, then I'm confused, like, why they wouldn't either remain with the, with the city, and/or why the district would just do their own?
We'll make sure that there's a detailed report, but just briefly, generally, and Ron, you can step in, but as I recall, the Godinez Joint Use Agreement specifies that the green facilities that you see, that are joint-use facilities, when they are rented by the city to a third-party user, say a nonprofit organization, or a sports organization that has nothing to do with the school district, those fees are specified in the joint-use agreement, they're collected by the city, and they're turned over, and we actually review the, the documents at the monthly technical advisory committee, that we, that we have agendas, they're turned over to the school district. At the same time, because there's an exchange in fees, we also show the invoice of what the city charges the city, but for the non-joint use, like Field Five and Six, which is something that's been talked about, perhaps it could be changed, but in the future, but we're just following the miscellaneous fee schedule, that anybody that uses the park, not the joint use, we charge fees, and it's a sliding scale, because if it's a nonprofit, or school, Santa Ana-based versus an outside business, for example, they get a higher fee outside of Santa Ana. But that's where, and every month, when we meet with the school district, we do this exchange on documents and going through these, these monies of what we provide to the school district and what we invoice the school district. Is that correct? In fact, there's a meeting tomorrow, there's a meeting tomorrow to review that. So we have all the, all of that, and we'll make sure that we work with the city manager to make sure that all of that is spelled out. You know, that was, that was a long, I was thinking about, that was back in two, I was twenty-nine years old, John, when we were doing...
It was a long time ago, huh?
It was a long time. Well, here's the thing, Ms. Macias was out there, she was out there way back when as well, too. But what I don't get, I think Board Member Palacios is a vampire, because he doesn't change. Look at him, he looks the same he did...
Could have told you that a long time ago.
Whereas, you know, me, I've lost my hair.
I have a different worry, not vampire, okay?
But...
It's been a while, yeah.
So my comment on that, thank you, Mr. Villegas, yeah, my final comment, second time. Mr. Murat, thank you for sharing that, but, but you said something that caught my attention. So, we, you owe us money, allegedly, allegedly, right? So you're going to turn over the, the fees to Santa Ana Unified, and then, when you meet with us every month, you give us an invoice of what we owe you, so then in reality, you don't possibly give us money, because you charge us a lot, so we owe you money. Is that, or maybe we break even, or...
No, whether, whether we break even or not, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, whether we break even, but we have all those figures, and we'll make sure that it's part of the, part of the report.
So when you do this report, Mr. City Manager, is there a timeline we can look forward to? Because we're not meeting again, I think, until, what, April or something? And we, we don't want to wait that long, because we're talking about the needs of our community, and, and that's what caught my attention when you say, "Well, we meet every month, we give you, you give us an invoice, and then we're waiting for a check, but we probably don't get it, because we owe you so much money."
Sure. No, no, I'll work with, with whatever deadline the city manager wants, we can fast-track this, it'll take us maybe a week or two to gather the information.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm looking like more thirty, within thirty days, because we'd like to address it with our board and our cabinet, and I'm sure you guys want to address it as a council as well. And then we talked about the joint use meeting, I mean, the joint meeting, and we can have that on the agenda if that works for you guys. So I'm very interested when he said, you know, "We meet monthly, how much you owe, how much I owe," kind of thing, and...
Correct.
Who do you meet with over at, who do you meet with over at the school district?
He meets with my staff and myself.
Oh, okay.
And we do meet with the technical advisory committee, with Mr. Moet, Mr. Hono, and other staff, Genie, and so we do exchange the documents. So he is correct, we do exchange the documents. If I had to characterize it, I would say it's close to breaking even, but I couldn't tell you if it's exact. I would say that it's generally, there is an exchange, though, between the two sides of what is generated by use of our facilities versus what we have to pay for our fields. So it's fairly close to...
And I want to say that school district staff is wonderful to work with, we have a very good, we meet regularly. The, the, just so that, for those of you that might have questions, why, why does this technical advisory committee exist? It was actually part of the joint-use agreement for Godinez that said that a joint, a technical advisory would meet a group, city staff appointed by the city manager, school district staff appointed by the superintendent. So it's part of the agreement, which is why we regularly meet, but it, we don't just talk about Godinez joint use, we talk about all of the joint use.
Mr. Godinez, if you may, you can conclude that discussion. There is a room that they've been using, that they've never been into, other than when they put the musical instruments in, ten years ago.
Would you like to rent it, Mr. Palacio?
Pardon me? No, 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 we, we, you know, it got moldy, we finally got in there, and we asked the city, "You're not using it, you should get it back to us." I mean, if you're not using it, right?
Okay. We'll make sure to add that to the report.
My, yeah. Okay, well, my comment is going to be, if everyone is good on their comments, my comment is that, yeah, we need to have a fair and balanced agreement on the use, because, you know, like I said earlier, it's a little odd, I mean, we've got the school saying one thing, and we have the city looking out for, for our people also, but we all serve the same community. And so if I could ask the, the board, if, if you find another, you know, a room or, you know, something that's not used, I would like to know about that, so we can address that. I mean, it does no good that these things are empty, right?
Don't you worry, we'll notify you.
Okay, I'm sure. And, and if we can get also from our staff, a, you know, this, a scale or something, where all the, you know, the fees are, you know, how we address the fees with other schools that are not in Santa Ana, and then, of course, our public schools, so if we can look at something like that, that way it's easy to read, and we can look at it and just say, "Hey, this is, we can compare it." That would be great, if we can get something like that. I'm going to go ahead and move on to item number 3.4, very fun item, about the water tower initiative. Can I get staff?
Yes, I think our water resource manager, Naveen Saba, will take that item.
Yes, I think our Water Resource Manager, Naveen Saba, will take that item.
I think we will do a little bit of a joint. Jorge Garcia, Assistant to the City Manager, and working in coordination with Nabeel Saba, who's our Water Resources Manager, our Public Works Team, and then working with Orin Williams and others at the school district. We've exchanged ideas, different options, over the course of what seems to be a lengthy process, but we look forward to continuing the dialogue and looking at options and how we can potentially move forward on this. On the city side, we have, as I believe everyone's aware, we have performed appraisals, both organizations have performed their own, and then we mutually agreed to do one joint appraisal that we would move forward with. We did receive that, the valuation was a little bit over a million dollars, just a tick over a million dollars. And the city is looking forward to finding options, solutions towards completing a transfer of that property. I believe one of the exhibits that you have is the legal description of what it is. I actually believe that this may not be the final updated one. We did an early preliminary when we did the initial appraisal, and then we did a final. So I will make sure that we provide the superintendent with the final. I believe, Orin should have that from the appraisal, but we will make sure that everyone has the up-to-date property description, as we did reduce the size during the final survey. We did go out to the site and mark it out at Davis Elementary. And with that, I'll turn it over to Orin if he'd like to add anything.
No, I think that Jorge has done a good job of characterizing the activities. There was a few starts and stops, but I think globally, we're at a position now that we just need to come to terms with. And I know the superintendent is planning on making some counter offers to the offers that were originally given to the district, as far as how to resolve the difference, whether that be, and there's a variety of things that we could do as far as whether a long-term lease, again, sale of the property, or a variety of different things. So she has a creative mind, and she'll be able to give you some options in the near future.
Councilmember Benavides.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on this one, this is a parcel of land, I don't know if it's on here, it's about, I don't know if, again, if it's accurate, saying 16,000 square feet, that seems larger than.
You know, I think that this actually is, because the original number was about 20,000, so this, so 16 is the right number, so this is the final one, yes.
Okay. So a lot of what we've been talking about today is this idea of partnership, of parity, of reducing fees on the part of the city, of potentially waiving fees altogether. This is another one where, you know, I'm, I just, at the end of the day, if the city ends up paying for a million dollars, million dollars plus, that's at the same time, the same, and we've talked before, it's the same kids, the same families, same people that we're providing, you know, support for and serving. So it's taking funds that would go towards either parks, or after-school programs, or public safety, or something that, some of the services that the city provides, to go for a parcel of land that probably doesn't really have a whole lot of use to the district. It hasn't for the last, I don't know, how long has this, the lease been going?
Hundred years.
Hundred years? That's a little while. I think it's probably, Mr. Palacios is the only one that's been around when, we're on the board when that came together. So, yeah, we're all friends here, so we can, so it just is another one of those situations where it's a bit perplexing to me, again. I believe, I am interested, and I'm going to request, Mr. Godinez, if you can help, at least for my own benefit, for the council to see whether, because I'm of the understanding that there have been parcels of land that the city has owned that at different times over the, over the years, last few decades, probably, or as a district was looking to either establish new schools, or, I'm not sure if even the district, I don't know if I dreamt this up, but that even the site either via and/or the district offices at some point were city property. I may have dreamt it, I don't know. But I am of the understanding that some, that the city has provided city parcels for, to support our school districts. And I know for certain, because this one, I was there, I've been there for ribbon cuttings and other things, on the Brant Santiago Community College District, on the Digital Media Center, the College Avenue over by the school, just the main campus, a number of other spaces where the city has provided that. So I believe that that's been similar for the school district, Santana Unified. So here, it's the idea of us being, the city having to fork out a million-plus dollars for this parcel, again, that hasn't been utilized for the last 100 years, it seems that there, it doesn't, we're not talking about equity and parity anymore. So I know that there, that we ended up acquiring recently, that the city ended up acquiring a parcel right down, just within 100 feet, 100 yards at the most, probably even 100 feet, probably closer. So I just would, if we are at the end of the day going to end up paying 100 or a million dollars plus, I just would ask, Mr. Godinez, that we look at costing out to see what makes sense, if we have that other, the city has that other parcel down, just a bit away, whether it would make sense to look at that parcel, if, for relocation, if that makes sense. Anyway, just an idea, to see what would make sense all around. It may not be feasible, and may not make sense whatsoever, but.
So, Mr. Benavides, Councilman Benavides, you're absolutely right. We've been, and our new city manager's here now, but through the other transitions, we've been trying to work with the city to figure out what best makes sense so that we can support all the residents. And so the idea is, how can we both win on this, and how can you maintain that space without infringing on any future ability to provide water in that area of the city? We're not looking to get rich with a million dollars, right? But we are looking to try to see how we can leverage and partner together with what you already have in your inventory, or other things that we might be able to do collaboratively. But I would ask both the council and the board to allow our new leadership administrations to work through the item and bring something back. As its, you know, potential land acquisition and other legal issues may pertain, I would just ask, you know, now that we've gotten an update, that you allow us to move forward through the process and continue the momentum to partner.
Any other comments?
I just, again, a little, thank you, a little history, previous to you coming on board, our staff had told the school district, here are all these different parcels, these different parcels, take a look at them, tell me what you think, come back to us and tell us what you want that's equal to the cost of that land. So school district goes back, and they create their game plan, they go, all right, here are the properties we would like. So they present several options, only to find out that our city had already sold those parcels and not communicated with the school district. So that's kind of what slowed us up on this whole process. So I think, you know, what's done is done, we have a new, we have new leadership, let's go ahead and make it happen. This is a side note, this is just a comment, and I apologize, you know, for wasting your time on this, but, you know, we, there was something that happened one time, and we wanted to light up the tower, the water tower. The water tower has become actually a beacon, it's a marker in our county now. And so it was going to cost us a few thousand dollars to light it. There's now an electrical, or a computerized system now that can change, that you can put up there, filters, that can change the different lighting on it, so that if it's 4th of July, it could be red, white, and blue, if it's Halloween, it could be orange with a little jack-o'-lantern or something. But that's something else that I think, on a separate note, that we might want to take a look at, just to bolster our city's image as well, but thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, Ms. Amesqua?
No, thank you.
Going to continue to item number four, update on the city youth services supervisor position. Staff?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember. I, there's a handout, I wanted to share the good news that the city council approved this new position, that is, in the process of being filled, it's to the Youth Services Supervisor. I won't read everything, but I will read some of the things that are highlighted, the purpose of this position, which I think will have a positive impact for all of youth services across the city, whether, so the intent of this position is to inform, develop, and implement, and provide a central resource for youth programs and services. Key to this job is to evaluate, consult, and collaborate with residents, law enforcement, nonprofit, and faith-based organizations, and schools to determine needs, to plan programs, and to conduct ongoing evaluation program activities for senior youth. The position will plan, research, organize, and implement youth-related programs or services at school sites, parks, and other locations within the community. The position hasn't been filled, there were 330 applicants, and we're in the process of finalizing and concluding the selection in the next few weeks. Be happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Benavides?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure if I, I think I may have requested this update, perhaps not, but I, I think it's important, one, we discussed it, I think, at the last, at the last time we got together here, a few months ago, we had just posted this position, or we're moving toward that. And so the first few items of the agenda have been a little bit of going back and forth. The next few, I'm pretty excited about, because this is what we are talking about, okay, we're locking arms, we're in this together, right? So the Youth Services Supervisor, bottom line is, the vision here is for this person to be a liaison, to be outward-facing, looking at the community, how can you partner? Clearly, I would imagine that a key partner, you know, a priority partner would be the school district, the district who is, you know, who else serves the 50-plus thousand students, you know, throughout the city than the school district. So I'm looking forward to this position being filled, to us being able to have this person introduce them to the appropriate people on the school district side, and from the beginning, as they hit the ground running, look at, how do we work together to be able to serve our students, serve them well? I've mentioned before, there's a, out in the city of, in Denver, there's an office in a similar position, is the Director of Youth Success for the city. And there's, I love that title, and just that, it speaks of the mission, right, of this role. And so maybe at some point, we even look at modifying our title, but in essence, I'm looking forward to our staffs working together, working with the faith community, working with other nonprofits, to look at how we can collectively look to see our students thrive. And there are, we're a city with tremendous potential, and I described Santana as a city of promise, because if you look at the potential, the gifts, the talent that we have in all of these young people, being the second, being one of the youngest cities in the nation, then we're in a great spot. And so, anyway, looking forward to this being filled, and us working together, and putting this person, it's a great work to be a liaison and serve and partner with the district. That's all, thank you.
So thank you, Councilman Benavides, I share your comments. I think it's very critical that whoever is hired, that after meeting your city staff, that the next stop is the school district. Dr. Susie Guerras in the audience, Susie, you want to raise your hand over there? And the reason I'm introducing her is because she has overseen our parent centers that will be opening in our school sites. We had talked about this at the last meeting, and so we talked about you joining us, we didn't give you a fee, we just said we have parent centers. And so agencies, nonprofits will be able to come in, as long as they don't charge our families a fee, and partner up with us and have usage of the parent center, because we're going to be there anyways. And so as Dr. Phillips had talked about, our schools are now open till 7, 8, 9 o'clock at night sometimes, and so we welcome not only this person, but any of your staff that want to come out. And I think we talked about, Dr. Guerras is going to have a certain side of the wall for the city, so that you can put up your pamphlets and things of that nature. So this is wonderful, and we are, we are looking forward to whoever you hire to meet them, have them come to a board meeting, we'd like to put them on the agenda. We'll all work with Dr. Phillips and put them on the agenda to introduce themselves and talk about how we're going to partner up together. So as soon as you know who that is, you can let me know. And I see Dr. Guerras waving her hand over there, did you want to share something? Can you come to the mic if you are, please?
Of course. As a matter of fact, Mr. Cortez and I have already met to start planning on what items we're going to be providing those as resources.
Great, thank you, that's what we're looking for. So thank you, and again, when you finish and you know who you're going to hire, please let us know, let Dr. Phillips' office know, we'll put them on the agenda, give them some time to introduce themselves, and talk about where we're heading together. Thank you.
Any other comments from staff, or anything else? Okay, we're going to move on to item number five, Summer Nights Program. Can I have?
Yes. The Community Development Agency, Chris Dalton, will be presenting an update on that.
Thank you.
CDPGI.
Good evening, Councilmembers and School Board members, my name's Chris Dalton, I'm with the Community Development Agency as a Neighborhood Initiative Project Specialist, and I'll just be giving a brief overview of the Summer Night Lights Pilot Program. Okay. So just a brief overview of how this program came to be. It was at the request from Mayor Pro Tem Michelle Martinez. She had asked the city manager's office and Parks and Rec to look into the Summer Night Lights program that is currently running out of Long Beach. The staff wasn't able to get in contact with them, so they looked at the city of LA, who's currently has this program operating in 32 centers and schools throughout the city. After the initial research, Parks and Rec had come to us and asked if CDA could use Community Development block grant funding to fund this project, and we were able to set aside $100,000 from our public service budget to allow this program. The CDPG application is now open, and it closes on February 5th at 5:00 PM. So how the concept will work is, a nonprofit would work in cooperation with the Parks and Rec and Community Service Department and/or the Santa Ana Unified School District. And how this would work is, in order for a nonprofit to operate out of a community center or a school, they would have to get a letter of recommendation from the principal allowing them to operate. So it couldn't just be a nonprofit applies for this and just starts doing it, they actually have to get a letter of support for their program. The nonprofit would operate the center or the school from 9:00 PM to 11:00 PM, from July 1st to September 30th. I know that school gets out a little bit early, earlier this year, sometime in May, and then goes back in August. So the days of operation are going to be determined by the nonprofit. How it works in LA is when school is out, the nonprofit operates the centers Wednesday through Sunday, from 9:00 to 11:00, and when school is in session, they just are open on Fridays and Saturdays from the same time. As part of the application, a nonprofit has to provide the details of the program. They kind of have free rein to do any type of programming, whether it's sports, arts, music, health screenings, things like that, they're allowed to do all of that, and then they have to provide details of the program. So the only costs identified right now are the facility rentals. City manager staff got these two estimates, about $15,000 to operate a city-owned facility, and about $30,000 to operate out of Madison Elementary, you know, and that was just based on operating the center, centers about seven days a week for that, but again, when they come and ask for a letter of support, they have to really put together a budget and ask, you know, get the actual costs. So the applicants, again, must submit a program budget that is approved. Next one.
Okay, thank you very much. Is that correct right here, what I'm seeing, 9:00 PM to 11:00 PM?
Yes, it is.
Wow, that's kind of like, okay. Do you have a comment from Ms. Amesqua?
You want to go first?
I have questions, but you can go first.
So Councilman Benavides, myself, and at that time Councilman Roman Reyna, took a tour, we got a, I'm sorry, a presentation by the California Endowment, I believe it was, David, two years ago, roughly, a year and a half ago, about the Summer Lights program in Los Angeles, very successful, had some bumps additionally. It had some bumps additionally, but the homicide rates, the gang activity, the domestic violence calls decreased. They have data to show. Works very closely with LAPD, which means Santa Ana Police Department, and should we partner up, would be Santa Ana School Police as well. What I have asked Councilwoman Martinez is to arrange, we're arranging a tour with the California Endowment, so that school staff, the superintendent, board members, and some of the cabinet can go and also meet with the California Endowment and get a presentation from LAPD, similar to what we did that day. And I would recommend, from the city's end, if you have not heard about it, or you don't, you want to see it firsthand, I recommend you join us, because it is successful if we do it right. I support it. We just have, as a district, have to look at what the cost is for us. There's going to be bumps in the beginning, of course, but it's about sticking to our guns, not literally, but, you know, sticking to the plan, and we don't have to do it from 9:00 to 11:00, as LA did or Long Beach, but I know it makes people nervous, because when you look at the time, you're like, ooh, the boogeyman's out at that time. But not necessarily, because it's a well-run program if we do it correctly. Police presence, police there interacting with our community, and the nonprofit that's there. So I applaud you for putting aside the money for this type of program, because it will benefit our city. So if we bring it to Townsend, you know, I'm sure we'll see a decrease in gang violence. And I believe there's been two, from what I've heard, Mr. Moat can correct me, there's two areas that we're looking to pilot, Salvador Park and, I was under the impression Salvador Park and Townsend, so I'm not sure about Madison?
Yeah. The concept of Townsend, which is Jerome Park, and Madison came primarily because it became clear to staff that the California Endowment was interested in perhaps adding to the budget with regards to CDBG. And if you look at their focused area for Santa Ana, on where they spend their money, it's, it includes Madison on one end, and Jerome on the other. El Salvador is actually not in their focus area.
You're talking about the area in the building helping communities?
Correct, uh-huh. So that, the thought of suggesting those two places is, was primarily because there could be more leveraging of additional monies to the CDBG monies from the California Endowment. Having said that, though, there are, there is an interest from a very successful nonprofit organization that chatted with me about would the city also consider using El Salvador? And we are, I have, I expressed to CDA, and from the Park and Rec perspective, we don't have any problem if a program like that is at El Salvador. So we'll see who applies and where their focus area will be, but those are all needed areas. It is a pilot program, even if it ends up only being one area, I think it'll be the beginning, and hopefully momentum will continue.
Well, I can just speak as the board president from our end. We don't want to take too big of a bite initially. We do want to start off slow, and get the history, and go meet with the endowment in LA, visit with them to see, maybe we can get a hold of Long Beach and visit with them. But, so we may agree to two sites, if we get down to that, see what our cost is, but I think three is a little too big. We've never done this in Santa Ana, so there are going to be hiccups, and then you need to make sure that law enforcement's on board, because it is, it's an intervention program. And as we know, there's gang activities in the areas that we're looking at, and that's the whole point, right, is to provide gang intervention, prevention programs, bring out the community again. So whatever areas you guys decide, I would hope that we're at the table, because we're going to be a partner, so we want to be at the table. I was hoping it was more like Townsend area, you know, areas where, based on law enforcement's data, can show most gang activity, the most violence in our city. So again, you, you're the experts, you have that data, how you want to do that, but please include us at the table. And I know we met, so thank you very much, Mr. City Manager, but when we meet again, we'll bring the superintendent in. And again, we're going to take a tour, the California Endowment's going to arrange it, so if you want to be included, I'll be sure to include you and your staff to come and take a tour with us. Thank you.
Councilmember, Councilmember Tina Harrow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few questions, and then this, this is going to either take me in one direction or another. Has your office been aware of this particular program?
In talking, in working with Ms. Amesqua, she's brought me along in terms of her experience with the program, and so I'm looking forward to going to view the program myself.
But our staff has not met with you regarding the school uses?
They met with me.
Oh, they met with you, okay. One of the things, I agree, I think Madison is a fantastic location because of, that's one of the hotspots in the city, that neighborhood. I agree with Board Member Amesqua that we should probably take a look at two sites. I know there's still CDBG money if we don't go to three sites. I think that, from my understanding, is the PAL program has also been cut, so maybe we can utilize some of those CDBG funds that we were going to allocate for a third site into PAL, and take a look at it, since we're getting a partnership, you know, we're doing these, these works with our law enforcement agencies as well. I, the 11 o'clock, it's just that I don't know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm just off, but I mean, I had to be home by a certain hour, or else I'd get knocked out. You know, so, so I don't know if, every community's a little different. So I think that's something we should take a look at. I'm not saying that I'm opposed to it, I'm just saying, let's, let's...
The program is a great program. The problem is, you've got a week for something that we want us to consider, so, you know, there's no way that our staff in one week is going to be able to determine whether, how the role the district would play, and what would it take to get it done. You know, the, the concept, the discussions occur, but our staffs need to meet with each other, to have the discussion as to, a meaningful discussion as to what are the details, because the devil is the details, and we simply don't, don't know. I mean, and are we supposed to apply in one week to CDBG?
No.
Nope?
So where are we with that, Gerardo?
The deadline?
The deadline is February 5th. We've had, it came out January 8th, and we've had four workshops that the nonprofits had to attend in order to actually apply for CDBG funding. They were given, the information that you've been given right now is how the program operates, that they need to get a letter of support from the school district, and find out what those operating costs are ahead of time before they even apply. And then on top of that, currently, right now, we don't have any applications in for the Summer Night Lights Program. There's been three nonprofits that have approached me that are interested in it, and one of them has talked, the one that talked to Gerardo, it will probably be applying, submitting their application sometime this week, but I'll know more probably by the end of this week, if there's even an application for the Summer Night Lights Program.
So can I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Amesqua.
Yeah, I would just...
So can I ask why there was such a quick turnaround, with such, I mean...
It was just direction that was given to us, as far as, do you have money for this? And then added to the application. It was actually added the day before I put the application out.
If I can jump in here. The CDBG funding cycle has its own schedule, and so we really reacted quickly from that meeting to try to get it on there. But the proposals that we anticipate getting, and we hope to get a few, once we get the proposals and we vet them, then, you know, that's not the end of the, that's actually the beginning of the process. So that's when we would be able to engage and review the proposals, maybe find out if there's anything that needs to be added, or things that are deal breakers, and all of that. This is just to fit into the CDBG funding cycle, but the agreement itself, or the vetting and all of that will happen afterwards.
Thank you. So I, and again, I've been, I've been meeting about it and hearing about it, and I've let our superintendent know along the way. And that's why the next step is to go on a tour and visit, and then to meet with, as well as meet with the California Endowment. And I'm sure you have some nonprofits that are, that are in partnership with us, and work in our schools, and know our kids, and, and as Councilwoman Tina Harrow indicated, you know, we, and Santa Ana, if 11 o'clock's not comfortable for us, then we tweak it to fit our city. But, but just keep in mind, the whole point is to get in there and stop the gang violence that's occurring at night, right, as the boogeyman when he comes out. So that's the whole point, and it's only a brief time, and so I'm glad that you let us know about the CDBG timeline. So we will be at the table, but we, we will need the cost, as you know, we'll need all that information, and I'm sure your office will communicate with the superintendent's office.
In fact, one of the, one of the reasons that we sort of prioritize the two locations as pilots is because it would be in the California Endowment, you know, eligible area. If we're, if we're able to get the California Endowment to fund this, it actually would be a lot easier, because CDBG monies have, you know, recording requirements that are kind of onerous, so it's not really ideal. It's actually available, and so if nothing else, we can do that, but in terms of the recording and all of that, it's actually quite cumbersome. So if we can get additional funding, then, or alternate funding, then that would free up the money to do something else with, with the CDBG monies that we could, then it's a different timeline as well.
And I would just say that as you're reviewing the applications, you know, Councilman Roman Reyna and Ms. Councilman Benavides and I took a tour with them and met with them, it's very important, as you all know, that they know how to do this type of business. They know how to work in our community, they know our community, they have a relationship with our law enforcement, they have a relationship with all of us, and they, again, they know our kids, because if you bring somebody from the outside who doesn't know, then we're going to be wasting money, and it's not going to be successful. So it's just my humble two cents, but they shared with us the, how they worked it out, and it's been very successful in LA and Long Beach, so I'm hoping we can bring it here as well. Thank you.
Okay, we will let the process take place. Thank you, everyone. Let's move on to item number six, the update on the Santa Ana Youth Restorative Justice Initiative.
Mr. Chair, we have a brief presentation from Dr. Sonia Yamas, who is the Assistant Superintendent of School Performance and Culture in the Santa Ana Unified School District.
Thank you, members of the Joint Youth Board. Good evening. You can't hear me? Sorry. Can you hear me now? All right, I think I prefer to hold it about right here. So for the last four years, our district has been developing our restorative practice framework, and it's, it's about ensuring that our students are building meaningful relationships, and engaging in meaningful dialogue with teachers, staff, and students. I think there's a preconceived notion that restorative practice is only about serving at-risk students, but that is untrue. So restorative practice is really about ensuring that we have meaningful engagement with our youth, and through this initiative, and through this framework, we've been able to build meaningful dialogues in the classroom with our teachers, and our students, with our staff, and really ensuring that we're having a positive school climate as our ultimate outcome. So we've had increases in our school climate through our California Healthy Kids Survey. Individual students, staff, and parents have shown an increase in safety on our campuses, and ensuring that they feel that they are cared for, and there's meaningful relationships with our stakeholders. Last year, our school district embarked on the I-3 grant, which is the Investing in Innovations Grant through the U.S. Department of Education. We received a $3 million grant, at which point we were able to hire on additional staff to support our students. Although it is a district-wide initiative, we have 17 school sites, intermediate and high schools, that have taken upon themselves to utilize their funding to build their restorative practice framework, and hired on a restorative practice intervention specialist. We are the only school district in Orange County to do so. And with that, with the I-3 grant, we have then also been able to expand to support 26 other additional schools in Santa Ana U.S. Unified. So we, over the last five years, have moved from 7,800 suspensions down to approximately a little bit over 2,300, and our expulsions have gone from 179 down to 26 this last school year. And I think we're looking at meeting our mark again this, this year around. We looked at our, our data recently, and it looks like we're on track to continue to move forward within our district. I think the main piece in regards to restorative practice is ensuring that we're building our students' level of social awareness, and understanding of differences, and validating concerns, and, and being able to articulate, specifically in a globalized economy. We want them to have that ability to network, to spark those conversations, and how else are we able to do that with really engaging in meaningful dialogue? So however difficult the discourse, when you're utilizing restorative practice, there's a sets of assumptions, with always the premise that there's a respect in the room, and of understanding, even if there is a difference of opinion. So a lot of skill sets being developed in the classroom, we've also offered it out to our parents, we have approximately 700 staff members who have been trained in the two-day training to facilitate these circles in their classroom, as well as the support services, individuals who've been able to do so. We have approximately 9,000, a little bit over 9,000 students that have actually had individual meetings, and some have been related to discipline, others have been related to the ability to just have an opportunity to speak and speak their voice. So that's a little bit about our initiative, our restorative practice framework within Santa Ana.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Councilman Benavides?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, I've, through, through various circles, I've, I've heard about the innovation and these, these steps that the district has made to, to commit to supporting our young people, and to look at intentionally making, providing options for our youth to be able to, you mentioned, engage in meaningful ways, and some of the impressive numbers is that the diversion of, from expulsions and suspensions, obviously, we have the same students, we must be doing, or the district, or we as a community must be doing something different if we're being able to have our, our students stay in school, and stay more engaged, and be supportive. So, so as we were providing some recommendations as to agenda items, I was very interested in learning more, so appreciate you bringing us up to speed, and in that whole spirit of partnership, wanted to make sure that we, as, as a city, were, were better informed, both from a council standpoint, staff standpoint, and ultimately, if there is any way that we can step into that partnership, you know, more meaningfully, I think, I probably speak for, for this, the committee and my colleagues, that we would be interested in, in doing that. And so whatever that, that looks like, mainly, and this is very, very interesting, and more of a full picture, and I appreciate Assistant Superintendent's presentation, some of when, when I've heard about restorative justice, when, in the past, has been primarily around the area of discipline, law enforcement, which is, which is important as well, as far as diversion programs. So that's, that was some of my frame of thought, is there's school police, but there's also Santa Ana police, and there are, we interface with, our PD interfaces with, with youth as well, and so I just wanted to ensure that, again, our city manager, our staff was aware, and if there were any ideas, suggestions, ways that we can, again, intentionally work together to support our young people, to support the city, to support the, the district, I think it would be, again, of benefit to our, to our community and our youth. So with that, I don't know if there's anything that might come to mind at this point. I'm bummed that our police chief, and we didn't have command staff here tonight, but I, I'm certain that after the next item on the agenda, we'll, we'll meet the new person in command, that will then be able to in turn work with our chief to ensure that we're working together. So even beyond tonight, if there are any other suggestions that, or any suggestions that might come up on, on way, so we can, again, work together to support our youth, please let us know, so we can be very intentional about doing that.
Thank you, Councilman Benavides, we really appreciate it. I'm going to ask Dr. Yamas to, to cover why, Mr. Pelosi and I have a shirt on that says "We Care," and it would be a great partnership, it would be great for you to join us, and have kids work as well, join us, so if you want to cover that, please?
Yes, before I do so, I just wanted to say, before I leave the microphone, it's very important to also understand that this was also a commitment with the community, and so we had Resilience, OCE, Project Kinship, Neutral Ground, and Orange County Department of Education, who assisted us in the successful integration of restorative practices within our district. So I didn't want to leave my community partner... So I didn't want to leave my community partners out in our work. Um, as far as the "We Care" shirts, so, uh, last week, our superintendent and our, our Board of Education, um, we developed a mental health awareness video utilizing our SAUSD students, really ensuring and, and, um, urging our students to, to understand that "We Care" and to please seek help if they're ever in, uh, having any significant issues at home or at school. We just don't want to see any student feel like they're in isolation and so I urge all of you to also look at our video that's online. Um, it's, it's very heartening and, um, I think multiple people were very tearful at the end of the video, but it really hones in on the importance of relationships and understanding that you're not alone in the struggle and it takes a great amount of courage to come forward to say, "I need help." So as a school district, we stand strong and we support our community of all our stakeholders and, uh, "We Care," get help, we're here.
Thank you.
And we have shirts, if you'd like some. Mr. City Manager, please watch the video, because I think you'll call superintendent's office and say, "Hey, we'd like to make a video here at the city as well." So, um, you know, Dr. Yamas, thank you. We have children who are suffering from depression and mental illness in our community, domestic violence and a lot of other things, and so we're taking it on head-on and so I know you guys will want to join us. So thank you.
Thank you, Doctor, for your good work and if I can have, um, again.
Just one, thank you, yes, just, uh, we have a variety of means of communication, Mr. City Manager, that we can use to be able to promote the video, whether it be our, our email database through NEXOL, our, our Facebook pages, City and several other departments, Parks and Rec, I believe as well, and, uh, various, uh, PD and various other departments, if we can demonstrate our, our commitment and partnership to the district by helping to, to promote and, and get this message out to our youth. Uh, let's go ahead and undo that. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to ask Valerie Amos, if you could introduce your new chief?
I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Phillips.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I, it's my pleasure to be able to introduce, uh, Chief Anastasia Smith. And let me tell you a little bit about, um, Chief Smith. So she has over 27 and a half years of law enforcement experience and has retired from the San Diego Police Department as the Captain of Internal Affairs, Professional Standards and Equal Employment Opportunity Units. In that assignment, she also served as liaison to the Independent Citizens Review Board on Police Practices and worked with the community to improve police transparency and accountability. Uh, Chief Smith has over 17 years of supervisory and leadership experience and has dedicated much of her career to serving some of the most challenging assignments, including child abuse, sex crimes, internet crimes against children, vice and narcotics. Uh, she was also, uh, the unit commander in the San Diego County Anti-Human Trafficking Task Force and the Regional, uh, Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. Uh, she possesses an associate's degree and a bachelor's degree in Criminal Justice Management and she is the graduate, she is a graduate of the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia and the Sherman Block Supervisory Leadership Institute of California. Uh, Chief Smith has received numerous formal awards and citations and was selected as Woman of the Year by State Assemblywoman Lorena Gonzalez in 2014, and she also received the Women in Blue Award as she was honored by the San Diego City Council with Captain Anastasia Smith Day. So that happened in 2015. Um, she has a long history with her husband, 33 years, and she has two, uh, two grown sons and, um, one is an educator, one's a police officer, so she split the baby. But, um, anyway, it's my pleasure to introduce Anastasia Smith, Chief of Police. Chief, if you could just give us a few words?
Absolutely. Well, good evening, Council, good evening, Board. Thank you so much for providing me with this opportunity to meet you this evening and, um, I see that our next agenda item is a discussion about active shooter training, so I want to take this opportunity to cover both since Chief Valentin couldn't be here this evening. First of all, this is day 10 for me, but I've already been working very hard behind the scenes and since I got on board to start really addressing the needs of active shooter training and emergency preparedness in our department and in cooperation and collaboration with everyone in the region. So what's been done so far? I've already met personally with Chief Valentin, with Sheriff Hutchins, with, um, the OCA Fire Authority Chief Black. We've met personally and they all three have agreed and bought into, uh, a tentative plan that we have to do a very large-scale, multi-agency active shooter drill when school gets out, so probably about the second week of June. Um, I want to ensure you that this is something that I'm very, very comfortable in doing. My background also can, includes a significant amount of emergency operations, um, training. I operated as a field lieutenant for the City of San Diego, which covers 374 square miles. That's a 12-hour shift and you're the highest ranking and only ranking person out there and you respond to every single critical incident, active shooter, drive-by shooting, gang-related stabbing, barricaded suspects, and you are the incident commander. So I would handle routinely four or five of those in a 12-hour graveyard shift in one night. In addition, I was responsible and selected by the mayor in 2012 to be the Executive Security Officer for the International Association of Chiefs of Police Conference. What did that mean? I was responsible for planning the, uh, security and safety for over 13,000 chiefs of police that came from all over the world to the San Diego Convention Center. And I was responsible for putting together a team and a security plan that involved multiple agencies, FBI, NTF, local sheriffs, PD, and we were responsible for the security of all of those dignitaries that came for this conference and those chiefs for a seven-day period. And finally, as a commanding officer for the San Diego Police Department, I worked all over the city, but most importantly, I was one of only three chiefs that was permanently designated and selected to work in the City and the County Emergency Operations Center. So I participated in numerous emergency operation drills, you name it, active shooter, uh, earthquake, fires, tsunamis, all of those, planning for those. So I'm very comfortable in this realm and what I can tell you is I've been very, very impressed already with the teamwork, the collaboration and the communication that I have received already from the chiefs in this area. Next week, I'm on calendar to meet the commanding officer for the California Highway Patrol and also with the test and chief. So we are going to be working very vigorously to provide, um, a large-scale active shooter drill in June and internally as a department, we are building to that stage and we are conducting training with my team, my officers, um, twice a month. So, um, thank you so much for showing your interest and support in the safety. As we all know, the number one thing for all of us here is the kids and that's my number one goal too, is to ensure their safety. So together, I'm very confident that we can do that. Thank you all, it was so great to meet you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, any comments or questions or?
I just wanted to, uh, Mr. Chair, just mention that I had a text here from Chief Valentin, although he couldn't be here, he was, uh, communicating to me that he met with our new chief of, of school police and that they were already talking about this, uh, active shooter training and he's committed to it.
Very good, thank you. And, uh, so we'll move on to item number nine and discuss the agenda for the, the joint meetings. Anyone want to start off? The, the next meeting we have is in April.
Mr. Vegas?
Yes?
My offer is suggestion, uh, you know, the, the school district and the college boards came together, probably an easier way to do it is, is involve the superintendent and the president of the school board and the city manager and, you know, and, Mr. Vegas?
Yeah, he's the chair.
Your chair, to just come together and, and figure out what would be the, some of the issues and, and, um, in terms of ideas and, 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 uh, same time, it's, it's a, hopefully it's an, also an opportunity to kind of update both bodies relative to those four goals that we have, shared revenue, shared capital, uh, replacement, shared capital investment and, and shared maintenance in terms of looking at a master agreement of, this is something that would be fair, um, but, you know, it's something that we, both parties can, 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 can work with and, uh, as opposed to what would be our ideas or thoughts. We can share that with the president of the board and superintendent can encourage other board members to see what would be, would be of interest in. But that might be the easiest one.
Would you like, uh?
Yeah, I, I agree with, um, Mr. Palacio. It would work better if the four of us met and then, uh, we could put something together and then, um, Dr. Phillips can share it with the board and then you can share it with your, with your councilmembers.
It's more productive, I agree.
Yes.
So let's, uh, stay in communication.
Otherwise, you want to stay here for another two hours?
I don't want to stay here.
Okay, all right.
Well, we have food, but you know, I think people want to go home. Yeah, so, um.
Mr. Chair, just one question.
Yes, Dr. Phillips?
Can we discuss a timeframe for said meeting in the past, um, when we've been kind of talking about whether this is going to happen? I just want to make sure that both, both, uh, council and board understand when, whether it's April, whether it's February, what, what is, what timeframe are we talking about?
I say for now that let the meeting in April stand, but if we can stay in communication and come up with a meeting ourselves prior to that? Yeah, I'm, you have my commitment.
Yeah, before our next April meeting.
Before the, the April meeting.
Mr. City Manager, does that work for you?
April?
No, be, either before or the next meeting.
We have one in April and then we're going to have a meeting prior to, um, that, yep. We'll have to get our schedules, you know, how that goes, because everyone's so busy, but.
All right.
I agree.
Great.
Okay, I don't see anything else, uh, here, I have no speakers, so.
I just wanted to say.
Councilmember?
We have our, our chair here and for an agenda that was this long, I have to tip my hat for running an efficient meeting. I thought we were going to be here for at least three and a half hours, so, you know what, keep doing this, you're going to get the chairman of the year, you know? I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Benavides.
I just wanted to thank, uh, both, the, the board members, the, the school district, uh, you know, for willingness to come out to continue to work, uh, together and, and I think the theme has been that, 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 the, the idea of partnership. Uh, and, uh, just looking forward to continuing to, to work together and figure out ways that we can more intentionally have some measurable, you know, outcomes and things that we can, we can demonstrate to, to our community, uh, that at the end of the day, you know, they, they end up, you know, winning and we have, uh, just want to thank the staffs from, from both, uh, city and district, you know, for all of your hard work and want to welcome the new, uh, school police, uh, chief and look forward to her working with our, uh, chief again to provide that level of security and safety for our community. So it's a good thing, good meeting and, uh, that's all from me.
Thank you, everyone, and with that, we'll, we'll adjourn.